Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Keep your seats for the time being. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna start off this evening a little differently than we typically do. It was nearly this time last Thursday that got word of an accident that took the life of Cartersville Police Officer Sarah Barnes. The pain and heartbreak that was felt throughout our Cartersville Police family and our entire community was immense. The words from her obituary say it well, that in her short time on earth Sarah served her community and her country. She made a difference in the lives of others and was committed to a life in service to others. The favorite quote of Sarah summed up her approach to life. "Let us live like flowers, wild and beautiful, drenched in the sun." I asked Lieutenant Mike Bedekoffer to have some of her fellow officers share some thoughts on Sarah, and he sent me this. "The city was lucky to have Officer Barnes for the short time we did. Her military service, prior police experience, her personal mission to become a police officer touched and energized everyone she came in contact with. Officer Barnes had the ability to show empathy without the appearance of being weak. With a soft voice and a firm direction could handle the most aggravated of citizens or suspects. However, do not let her cool, calm demeanor lull you into thinking she was an easy target. If push came to shove, Officer Barnes would fight like the best of them," according to Officer Zach Millsap. "Once the fight was over, Officer Barnes would pick you up, dust you off, and let you know what a poor decision they made and they could do better." That's from former Officer McAfee. That's the kind of advice, that kind of advice can only come from a mother, which is what Officer Barnes' most important job was, and she knew that. It was not uncommon for Sarah to work both days off for Christmas or a birthday gift, which came around often for five children and a husband. The hole that Officer Barnes' death left in the Cartersville family will not easily be filled, but the impact she made will be reflected throughout those she cared for and for those she served. Chief McCann stated that Officer Barnes' contribution to the children of the primary and elementary schools, including the parents of the students, the city of Cartersville did not just lose a police officer, we lost a friend, a mentor, a counselor, and teammate. Alexis Clark, a dispatcher at our PD, and her friends shared these thoughts. "She was everything anyone ever wanted," or anything, pardon me, "she was everything anyone ever needed wrapped into one person. First and foremost, she was a mother with such a loving heart, she would often use the phrase 'don't let me mother you to death.' When talking to me during these times, now I would do anything to hear that phrase from her. She established a personal connection with every person she came across. Sarah was a giver. She would give you the shirt off her back even if she needed it more. Sarah would invest an endless amount of time and effort into people. If you needed to talk, she was there to listen. If you needed to cry, she was there to wipe your tears and let you get it out before reminding you that it was time to get back up again. If you needed to laugh, she always had something on hand. Sarah was a rock for so many, she carried so much on her shoulders for herself and for many others. Now it's our turn to carry on for her, to persevere and to help carry her family and each other through these troubled times, the way that Sarah would have helped every one of us." Fortunately, we don't have any experience in handling this type of event here in Cartersville. I want to thank Chief McCann for his leadership over the past week, and the same goes for our city manager, Tamara Brock. Thank you to her friends and colleagues in the Cartersville Police Department for continuing to protect and serve our community while you were grieving. I want to thank our community for their outpouring of support for our police and for Sarah's family. I was thanked by several of her family members for the love and kindness that our community showed them, and that helped them, bring them some peace and comfort during their time of loss. On behalf of the entire city of Cartersville, I'd like to extend our deepest condolences once again to Sarah's family, her friends, and to her Cartersville Police family. At the conclusion of her celebration of life service on Monday, Chief McCann made a last call to dispatch for Badge 189. I'd like to play that in honor of her this evening, followed by a moment of silence for Officer Sarah Barnes.
One four.
One.
Could you do the last call for 189?
This is for Sparkall Unit 73. This is the last call for Cartersville Police Badge 189. Officer Sarah Barnes, you serve as a member of the Cartersville Police with passion and dedication. We're not only grateful for your investment in the children at Cartersville Primary and Elementary Schools, but also for your desire to serve everyone you can in our city. Officer Barnes, you performed here to the honor of the police, and you will not be denied. We will honor your service with a brief moment of silence, and then we will resume starting in protecting our community as you have.
Thank you, Barnes.
Thank you, 189. We will take it from here. Your lodge has shifted. Sparkell Lodge 73, 189.
Our invocation this evening will be done by Cartersville Police Chaplain Rudy Ross, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, if you please stand.
Let us pray. And dear only Father, we do thank you for your love, that you've come to minister to us in our needs, and I thank you, Lord, for those that have served so well here in the council. I thank you for them, and I thank you for the job they do. I thank you for our officers, for the Cartersville Police, and other, of our fire department and others who provide that of a public service to our community. And I just ask right now for a special touch for, and continue to minister to that of Officer Sarah Barnes' family. We thank you for their commitment to you and their care in the midst of what they've gone through, and the love they've shown, and we've been able to show back to them. We ask, Lord, now that you would just bless them, and each day it goes by, that they will just feel your warmth and your comfort and your strength. And we thank you for these who serve in our city, and we ask your blessings. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join the police department and the Barnes family in saying our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for our own.
Ms. Ulmer, the roll trace there.
Here. 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 Here.
Thank you, Ms. Ulmer. We'll take just a moment to let our room clear out. We have just a moment of time here. that we like to do in our community, to recognize those youth in our community that accomplish great things, and tonight is no exception to that. It's taken us a little bit of time to get everybody together between the holidays and football banquets and whatnot, but we're delighted tonight to recognize the 2019 Cartersville High School Football Team. I have a proclamation that I'll read, and then I'll present these with us tonight. We have some of the seniors from that football squad, and gonna brag on them for just a minute with just a few of the great things that they've accomplished in their time at Cartersville. This proclamation reads that whereas the 2019 High School Football Team completed their season with a 12-1 record, the team was 4-0 in non-region play, outscoring their opponents by a combined score of 140 to 20. Whereas the team was 6-0 in region play, they were crowned Region 5 Quad A champs, and they outscored their region opponents by a combined score of 223 to 101, including two games where the opponent's only score was on a safety. That probably made the defensive guys mad that they gave up points. It wasn't even their fault. Whereas this team's seniors finished with a career record of 52 and 3, and were undefeated in region play for their four years. Whereas the entire Cartersville Purple Hurricanes Football Team, its coaches, managers, support staff, band cheerleaders, and touchdown club represented the entire Cartersville community with pride and class while achieving excellence. Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, along with the City Council, declare February 2020 as Hurricane Football Appreciation Month, and urge all citizens to recognize only this great achievement, but also to follow in the spirit of dedication, unity, and community pride that the 2019 Cartersville Purple Hurricane Football Team displayed on and off the field. We can give a round of applause. Coach Foster, would you like to say anything?
Yes, first of all, thank you for...
Yeah, right there at the microphone to do it there.
Just get close to where I work. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Santini and the entire City Council for having us. It's been a tremendous honor to serve our community, and this senior class as our head football coach, and they're just great young men, very hardworking. I love them very much. They are tremendous representatives of volleyball, adolescent athletes, and community leaders. Couldn't be more proud of them. I'm excited to see the great things that they're gonna do in their lives, and how they're gonna continue to serve our community as we move forward. Thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Skip right over the approval of the council meeting minutes, didn't I guess? Thanks for not correcting me. We'll approve the council meeting minutes for January the 16th, and you've had more than enough time now, even more than usual, to approve them, since we got a couple events into the meeting before we did it. But now's an opportunity to make any edits or corrections, or make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, Valerie Gilreath has agreed to serve on the Etowah Area Consolidated Housing Authority to fill Greg Frisbee's unexpired term. Ms. Gilreath is also being appointed to fill the new term, which will begin April 1st of 2020, and end April 1st of 2025, if you all approve.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Last one, Sam Grove has resigned from the Cartersville Building Authority due to a move to Florida. Fritz Dent is willing to serve the remainder of his term, which would expire May 15th of 2022, if you all approve his appointment.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Y'all are on a mission tonight, that's good. Mr. Lovell, next one.
Mayor, the City of Cartersville School Board and the Bartow County School Board have, at their previous meetings, approved a resolution to call for a referendum for a new e-Sploß, educational sploß tax to be imposed upon the residents of Cartersville and Bartow County. That election will be called for May 19th, 2020. Of course, the reason why the City Council has to approve it is the school board is a component unit of the city, and y'all actually have to formally call for the election for them and the county school board to conduct it. This resolution does allow for that to happen, and it is recommended for your approval by both school boards.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a memorandum of understanding between the City and Georgia Department of Transportation. Georgia DOT has a contract with CSX to do some improvements at the Main Street Crossing, and this memo of understanding, basically, we agree to support that project by doing some public works-type work, some curbing, maybe some sidewall, some minor things like that. And we did something similar on the Carter Street project when they upgraded that crossing, so it's pretty standard. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sanders on this?
Thank you.
If there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy.
Thanks.
Mr. Gillum, you have the next several, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you first with a resolution for a termination of contract with Legend Sports Media, as they have not performed the services required. So pursuant to Paragraph 12A of the agreement, either party may terminate the agreement upon 30 days' written notice. So we would like to recommend that the 30-day notice of termination be sent, as this agreement was signed and dated May 21st of 2019 between the City of Cartersville and Legend Sports Media.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is a contract with Denan Media Company. Denan Media Company will be providing scoreboards on Fields 3 and 4 at the sports complex, as well as a display board on top of the football scoreboard at Dillinger Park. So the city would be granting Denan Media ability to sell, market, deliver sports advertisements on these scoreboards, as well as placing indoor ad screens on the interior facilities, and static advertising boards on the exterior facilities, and in addition to rectangular flags that'll be on the light poles within Dillinger Park, with CPRD advertising on all of those, and every third to fourth light pole within the park. No fees will be paid by the city, as that will be provided by Denan Media Company. Denan will keep 70% of the sale of all advertising, with the city receiving the net 30% revenue of that advertising money. So we'd like to recommend approval for this contract with Denan Media Company.
Okay, any questions for Tom on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
The next is purchase of an HVAC unit for the gymnastics center. This would be a purchase for the unit itself. We did an RFP on December 4th of 2019. We received 10 RFPs in return, choosing Meadows Heating and Air for this unit, and the cost is $13,622, and this is a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Tom.
This is another purchase of an HVAC unit. This is for the gymnasium at Aubrey Street, the Upper Gym, or as it's known. We did a request for proposal on December 14th of 19. We received 11 RFPs, and this is for a four-, five-ton package unit. Once again, we chose Meadows Heating and Air. The total of this amount of unit is $15,417.
Okay, thank you. Questions on this item? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. While Mr. Port is making his way up, he has the next several, but there's also an item to add to the agenda that he is gonna be handling, so I'll take a motion now to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an item added. Dan, why don't you, we'll do that one last, just remind me that I added it.
All right, yes, sir. First item's removal of the Cook Street Fuel Station equipment. If you recall, a few years ago, we had the sinkholes down there at Cook Street. The building was demolished into canopy. Now we're getting ready to, need to remove the existing fuel equipment, the dispensers and the two 12,000-gallon tanks there. We've taken out bids, and MDDI out of Athens came in with the lowest price of $23,318. This'll meet all state requirements, so I'll have to meet, fill in the state EPD requirements, make sure we're doing it in compliance with them, and I recommend approval of this.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
This is another purchase of an HVAC unit. This is for the gymnasium at Aubrey Street, the Upper Gym, or as it's known. We did a request for proposal on December 14th of 19. We received 11 RFPs, and this is for a four-, five-ton package unit. Once again, we chose Meadows Heating and Air. The total of this amount of unit is $15,417.
Okay, thank you. Questions on this item? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. While Mr. Port is making his way up, he has the next several, but there's also an item to add to the agenda that he is gonna be handling, so I'll take a motion now to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an item added. Dan, why don't you, we'll do that one last, just remind me that I added it.
All right, yes, sir. First item's removal of the Cook Street Fuel Station equipment. If you recall, a few years ago, we had the sinkholes down there at Cook Street. The building was demolished into canopy. Now we're getting ready to, need to remove the existing fuel equipment, the dispensers and the two 12,000-gallon tanks there. We've taken out bids, and MDDI out of Athens came in with the lowest price of $23,318. This'll meet all state requirements, so I'll have to meet, fill in the state EPD requirements, make sure we're doing it in compliance with them, and I recommend approval of this.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
This is the Bartow County Grant Writing Invoice. This is our shared agreement with Bartow County on grant writing services. This is a semi-annual invoice, a budgeted item. It's $43,786.12, and recommend for your approval.
Okay, any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a, is being removed for now, Automox Patching Software, so you will see that on the agenda. We are removing that item from the agenda, so we'll move on to Cherokee Truck Equipment Repair.
Yes, Mayor, this is the, the garage department had to obtain a new main boom cylinder and some other equipment for a solid waste's claw truck. The cost of this work was $5,933.41, and recommend for your approval.
Questions? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This final item that Dan is handling, I'm gonna recuse myself from, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Calvin Cooley to handle this item, please. Proceed, Dan.
Yes, sir. This agreement is between, basically, Savoy Auto Museum and the City of Cartersville. I brought this for you at the first meeting in January, is an agreement, and they came back and had, wanted a formal document and writing. The city's handling this, basically, boring up 411 with some communication conduits, with also underground utility conduits. The total agreement is for $19,000, some change, that they're paying 100% of the cost. The city will obtain the communication, one communication conduit out of this. I recommend approval of this agreement. I handed you just one document, but there's about a 15-page document that Keith has reviewed that recommend approval of the Mayor Pro Tem to initial and sign the document, as well as the city clerk.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Cooley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, sir.
What is yours, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here, half electric department requesting purchase of two new underground trucks. Our existing trucks, one's 12 and 1/2, one's 16-years-old, and they're literally falling apart and costing an arm and a leg to keep them repaired and maintained. These were budgeted items to replace these two trucks. The sole source provider of these trucks from Altech is the only one that really makes them, so if we did get a quote from them, the trucks were $145,000 each by ordering them simultaneously, we do get about a 13, I'm sorry, $2,300 discount by ordering them that way. So the total budget we're requesting for is $290,000 to purchase those two trucks. And one was budgeted under this budget, one's budgeted under next budget, so they were, will be budgeted.
One way or another.
Yeah.
I didn't ask this question from work session. This aren't least for...
No, they're not.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I believe first up, we've got a flite mixer repair. This is actually something we've done before, that we mentioned in the work session. As we begin to take out existing equipment, as the course of the construction progresses at the wastewater plant, we will evaluate that equipment to see if it can be refurbished or repurposed somewhere else in the plant. This pump is one of those pieces of equipment. Flite did evaluate the pump and determined that it is a salvageable item, and can be refurbished for $12,209. That is a little more than the one we did in April. It requires two extra parts that are fairly pricey, but compared to a new pump, the exact same model would be $30,000 and change. We feel like this is a good investment to repurpose and refurbish this pump, and have it as a spare for use in other places in the plant. So we do recommend that for your approval.
Okay, I have a question, as you were talking through that. Will these still be in service when we get finished with our plant expansion?
They will.
Okay.
They will. We use probably a total of six of these in the plant now, and when the plant is complete, there will be more. I don't know the exact count of that, so having these as spares will be actually more useful than it is currently.
Absolutely, okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? And if there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. Next, we need to do some service work on the motor control centers in the wastewater plant. We've had some issues with being able to turn power off and on as a result of the construction. We've had these motor control centers where we go and go to pull power, and power doesn't drop. These are a little different than your home breaker, but they have some moving parts and springs, and there are things that can get out of alignment. There's a number of reasons why this would happen, so what we've done is priced some work to have those serviced, cleaned, and made useful again. We asked for pricing from Electrical Testing Incorporated, ETI. They gave a price of $12,850. I am asking for this to be a sole source to ETI. There is a little bit of a time issue with this. We would like to get this done as quick as possible, so that it will facilitate some of the construction activities that are going on. And additionally, ETI has done this work for us several times in the past, and they stick to their outage schedule, which is pretty critical for us. And in, I believe it was April of last year, the last time we bid this work, they were less than half of their competitor's cost. So for those reasons, feel like it's prudent to do a sole source to them on this project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bob on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, you have a couple of them.
Evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My first item is for a compact excavator. This is to help our crews with their new construction and maintenance jobs that we're having to do. We had put this out for bid. We had eight different bidders. I think there was, one bidder did two, in fact, so, but only three of those machines met our spec. Bobcat of Atlanta was the winner of that bid at $56,322, and this is a... Bobcat of Atlanta was the winner of that bid at $56,322, and this is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions for Michael on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nica, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Michael.
Number two here is a Safeco filter. It's a filter for our inline Transco project that's going here. This is the one that will go at Brown Farm Road. We're actually expecting delivery on the one that we ordered last September, supposed to be in tomorrow, and this one's supposed to be not far behind it. So it is $6,487, and we request your approval, please.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nica, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Carter? The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I come before you this evening requesting permission to make a repair on the emergency power generator at the Public Safety Headquarters Building for police and for fire. We're having an issue with the cooling system within that generator, and it will not operate for a sustained period of time that we need, up to 72 hours. Single source provider through Nixon Power, who provides the preventative maintenance for all the generators within the city. Cost of the repair will be $6,766.35. With your approval, this will be split between police and fire and the regular budget for maintenance issues.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Chief on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nica, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Reinhardt, give us some good news about numbers.
I will do my best. I will, Mayor and Council, we will be looking at the November 2019 and comparing to November 2018 financial report. The general fund revenues increased over last November by $775,000. Expenses increased by $793,000. Two areas of revenue I look at, good news on this one, local office and sales tax have an increase there of about $49,000, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $18,000. And the water and sewer fund revenues increased over last year by $34,000. Expenses increased by $4.9 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. And the gas fund revenues decreased over last year by $533,000. Expenses decreased by $3.2 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. The electric fund revenues increased over last year by $87,000. Expenses decreased by $208,000. This is due to increased personnel, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of electricity, and decreased capital expenses. Stormwater fund revenues increased over last November by $86,000. Expenses decreased by $277,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid Waste Fund revenues increased over last November by $187,000. Expenses increased by $228,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues increased over last year by $39,000. Expenses decreased by $298,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses.
Any questions for Tom on the finance report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else that needs to come for council this evening? Good. Chair Ryan, ten bucks. Motion to adjourn.